Alderman Lazara.
Here.
Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Winger.
Here.
Alderman Catalano. Alderman Sizmarsky.
Here.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Woods.
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Here.
Okay, decorum, next, report and recommendation, recapture agreements. I didn't want to do those. Approval, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes, the meeting of January 23rd, 2014. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, one opposed. Me. Maybe that's why I didn't want to approve them. Next, report and recommendation, recapture agreements. Mr. Forrest, or Jennifer, whoever's.
Thank you. As you recall, at the December PZB meeting, the committee recommended that staff move forward some amendments to the code pertaining to recapture agreements. Specifically, the recommendation was to remove the guarantee of a 6% interest payments and allow the city council to consider recapture agreements on a case-by-case basis. We brought that recommendation forward to the Community Development Committee meeting earlier this month. The CDC had an alternate recommendation that they made to the council. They wanted to modify the 6% interest guarantee to tying it to the prevailing prime rate of interest and also include a time limitation for recapture agreements, whereupon the expiration of the agreement, the city would take over the responsibility to repay those developers at that time and maintain all of the other language for recapture agreements that's currently in the UDO. So, that is the recommendation that's before you from the Community Development Commission, and staff is available for any questions that you may have about that.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
So, explain how this would work for recapture agreement. It says a timeline. And say there's, say the interest is, let's throw a number of $300,000. So, the city would have to recapture that agreement and pay the $300,000 to the developer?
That was what the CDC recommendation was, but of course, the committee and council under no obligation to follow that recommendation.
Go ahead, Alderman Roy Wesley.
Could someone explain to me, we talked about this in December, why would it have to go back to CDC? So, why was it?
Because it's an amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance, and by law, since that's our zoning ordinance, it needs to go through that public hearing procedure. It can't just go straight to council like a typical code amendment would.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
So, why didn't it go there first before we even?
We wanted to get the council's direction as to what they wanted us to do.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
After having the meeting there, what was staff's recommendation for this?
We, as I said, we presented the PZB's recommendation, and so we continue to support that unless we get other direction from you tonight.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
So, what do we do with the ones that are out there now? Just let them keep on going? I wasn't, I was out of town then.
Yes, this would be only pertaining to future recapture agreements. The attorney has advised us that we can't do anything through this process to alter past agreements.
Let me, I did some research looking, obviously, at the other communities, and I'd say most of the ones that I've read and actually worked with, all were zero interest. The ones that I could find that had interest payments in them were similar to what is recommended, you know, prime rate, and it was published in the Wall Street Journal on January 9th. They all pick out a date, and if the interest rate exceeds a certain percentage, it would not go above that, so there is a ceiling for the percentage. Then the, probably the most interesting one, or the one that I would like to emulate more is, I believe it's Downers Grove, they have a sunset to their contract in that it ends. So, part of their thought process, I didn't get to talk to too many people there, but part of the thought process was, if you're going to try to make money on this, you're only going to cheat yourself because everybody will just outweigh you and, you know, by time default, the recapture agreement would end or be null and void. So, I think that that's what we're looking at, to be more friendly. I mean, you could theoretically, if I had money to burn right now, get some easements and run utilities along the frontage road where Elgin O'Hare is going to be and get a recapture agreement for 18% and wait for the hotels to come and make money. So, there's a lot of inherent flaws in this, and then we get into the discussion of what are considered the costs. When you read through all the agreements at the different municipalities, you know, some of them are pretty vague of what's at it, and the ones that are more spelled out are even open to interpretation as far as legal fees and what that is. I don't want to make this overly complicated, which is why I thought when we recommend it, the 0%, I'm okay with adding some interest, but I would also like to add that, you know, end date or sundown date or whatever you want to call that, if that's a 10-year period or a 12-year period, because the problem with interest is it keeps on going. Right? So, something might happen, and nothing will happen for 12 years, and 2% is not a lot of money until you add 12 years. You know, and who knows what property is doing? We saw what property has done in the last five years, it's gone down by 50%. So, now the utilities are going up by 11% and property going by, down by 25%, 50%. You know, it doesn't make for a conducive development situation. So, I would make the recommendation that we, you know, if we have to have the interest that it is tied to prime rate, Wall Street Journal, whatever first week in January we want to pick, but that we have an end date for that contract. I think that that might require a little more research or discussion from the city attorney maybe, or what that timeframe should be or what's acceptable. Mr. Forrest.
Just for clarification, and Downers Grove is one of the communities that I didn't check, but we will research their policy. So, what you're proposing would be reviewing recapture agreements on a case-by-case, theoretically allowing prime rate as of a specific date to be charged for this recapture agreement, but a sunset clause where after a certain predetermined amount of time, be it five years, 10 years, 15 years, the recapture agreement ends, and the developer that installed those improvements would then be entitled to nothing from future users of his lines?
Correct.
Okay.
And if we add it in with the prime rate, because obviously, you're of similar age, so you've seen the 18%. So, if we put a, the ones that I read were capped at 10%, that was the max, no matter what the prime rate was. And then if we added the sundown, sunset date on the contract, I think that that would solve the majority of the issues. If anybody has any other questions? Alderman Peter Jacob.
I would be in agreement with Alderman Woods. I definitely would like to see it capped. I don't know if 10% is the right number, but I definitely would like to see it capped. But I do definitely agree on the time, that there should be some type of clause, be it 10 years, 15 years, whatever it is. And also, current, we currently have, we're, it can't exceed X amount of percent of interest, something similar, you know, maybe 25% or something over that timeframe. Thank you.
Alderman Lazara.
I just want some clarification on this. If you go to the first memo where we have, you know, motion to recommend to the city council, number, or letter B, add language to include time limitation so that the city will be obligated to pay developers. Explain that to me. Why would the city have to be obligated for that at all anyway?
Mr. Forrest.
That was the recommendation that the CDC brought forward.
Okay, so, I mean, I'm for taking that B completely out of there. I don't see why we should be obligated. Is that pretty much what you were saying?
Right, that's what I'm saying.
With the timeline?
Right.
Okay. All right, so, yeah, I mean, I'm for this as long as I see that, you know, the city won't be obligated to have to pay the developer.
Right, I mean, if that was the case, we might as well be collecting the interest and all the fees.
Right. Okay, thanks.
All right, thanks. Alderman Eugene Wesley.
So, what did I say? I would make a motion to table this in the next committee meeting for providing with those changes. So, that is my motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is report and recommendation, medical marijuana cultivation and distribution centers. Jennifer, John?
This item was brought forward at the request of the city attorney to consider some amendments to the UDO for medical marijuana-related land uses. As many of you probably heard, the state of Illinois passed some legislation allowing for these types of uses, medical marijuana cultivation centers and dispensaries. They're now legalized throughout the states. Although no one has proposed to do anything like this in Wood Dale, the attorney felt it would be a good idea to look at the ordinance and see where in the city these types of facilities may be appropriate. We're not allowed to completely exclude them, but we can limit them to specific zoning districts. So, staff's recommendation was to limit them as special uses within the I-2 district that confines the possible locations of these dispensaries where people would actually be coming to get their prescriptions filled, to the smallest possible zoning district within the city. And the special use process would ensure that they would all be coming back before the CDC and this body every time anyone would want to have this sort of thing considered. So, there would always be the opportunity to look at the circumstances for an individual property, any special considerations that should be given, security concerns, and that sort of thing. So, the CDC supported that recommendation, and that's what we have before you this evening.
Alderman Lazara.
A couple of questions if I may.
Go ahead.
If someone comes and wants a dispensary, we have to give this to them? Is that what we're being told by the state?
No, it's not required. We can't say in our zoning ordinance that they're completely prohibited. We have to have some allowance where they can go through a process where we'd at least consider it.
Okay, but we do have, as council, we have the final say-so if we're going to allow something like this in our city.
Yes, that's what the special use process would be versus it being permitted, where someone could automatically just come in and get their building permits. The special use process does give you that individual control.
Okay, so I understand that this is just to get it onto the bug, saying that we do allow it, but if somebody approaches us, they still have to come up to the committee to, or to the council to ask?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
You're, we're talking about special use here. Can't we put this in the industrial park section?
Yes, that's the recommendation, is in the I-2, not the larger I-1 district, but the smaller I-2 district.
Okay. Alderman Jacob.
Do we know why some of the communities have decided to do nothing at this time? I see Bensonville, Elmhurst, Carol Stream, and I know Bensonville is represented by our city attorney as well, so I'm kind of curious why Bensonville isn't doing anything, and we are looking into it.
Mayor, please.
Some of the mayors I've spoken to, they're talking about doing a moratorium like we did with video gaming. Well, actually, that's not allowed with this, like it was in video gaming. So, some of them are going with the moratorium route, which is incorrect. But, you know, everybody does what they want.
Alderman Jacob.
Do we know why Bensonville, since Pat represents Bensonville as well?
I didn't, no, I didn't speak to Mayor Soto, so I, on why they're not doing anything.
Mr. Murmice.
I know staff had proactively actually reached out to Pat because a couple of the council members had some questions on it, so we kind of got ahead of the game. I don't know if Bensonville's staff is pushing it and asking the questions, but I would assume that they're probably already in the works or not, far down the line. I just know that we had specifically asked about this because we knew it was upcoming, so.
Yeah, when I, when I looked at it, I think staff did a good job of drawing the circles and narrowing the area that they can possibly be, being the, being that we can't eliminate it completely, we have to give them a spot, and that is really the only spot. So, and following the rules and the laws as they're written, I think we did the best that we could do to narrow it down to the smallest area in town, and then it's still under a special use, which brings it back before us, so. Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Well, let's see, I will make a motion to approve what Plenian's zoning board brought to us and the committee. That will be my motion.
And I'll second that. Alderman Jacob.
One more question. I was at the CDC meeting, attended that, and the way I understood it is the cultivation that wouldn't be allowed in Wood Dale because it would not be in any of the state regulations. Am I correct on that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, no more questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Future Front Street Facade Program in February, citation policy to be determined. Is there anything else somebody would like to put on, interested? If not, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'd like to call the Public Works Committee to order. Roll call taker, note that the same people are here. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting on January 23rd, 2014. That's my motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
That passes. Report and recommendation, South Cedar Street light installation. I'll turn that over to Matt York.
Thank you, sir. We have a petition in front of us for some streetlights on South Cedar. The area in question is the area south of Spring Oaks, which is on the map right here. Basically, this area here is Spring Oaks, south to the Dead End at South Cedar. The original petition from September of 2013 asked for streetlights. The request was then, Public Works initiated a survey in October of 2013 that asked for if the residents were wanting a streetlight without an S. So, that's in front of you today, is a request from the Public Works Department on whether or not we want to proceed with streetlights or light in this area. My recommendation would be for two. One, this is Montclair, which mirrors South Cedar. This is approximately 1,400 feet from Murray, or excuse me, from Spring Oaks, south to the Dead End. One, one somewhat in this area, in the middle of the block, and then one at the end of the Dead End.
Mike?
Yeah, it's for Matt. Could you tell me, number five is going to be falling into the same category? Why is there a $1,000 difference? Both are getting two lights.
Yeah, not knowing exactly how many we were going to do, the runs that we were going to have to do, if I was going to have to directional bore all the way from Mer, or Spring Oaks, all the way south to the end of the block, that was going to probably be a greater cost. These are extreme estimates. What we'd like to do is use this project along with the next project on School Street and put them out to bid together, and hopefully, in quantities of scale, we can get ourselves a lot better price.
Mayor? You had a question there?
Did you?
Oh, I'm sorry. Did you? Okay, mayor?
Matt, you're talking about putting two, one of the residents was here last weekend was mentioning only one on South Cedar. The question is, where you're talking about placing them, the residents, I believe, are asked if they will host the light in front of their house. So, the one that says no doesn't actually receive the light right in front of their house. Has that been taken care of, or?
Well, no, none of this, none of the selection of the locations have not been taken care of because we don't know how many lights the committee or the council would like for us to put out there. Obviously, one needed at the end of the, at the Dead End, I think, is very important for safety issues. One, there is a little bit of place down there for parking, which I'm sure the police department would like to have lit up, and also, it runs into, runs into a forest preserve back there. The selection of the second streetlight, now, the petition itself asked for streetlights with an S. That's what the petition, they didn't ask for one streetlight, they didn't ask for two, they didn't ask for a dozen. They asked for streetlights. So, I am assuming my recommendation would be for two, and then that location of that second streetlight, somewhere in the middle of the block, we would try to pick probably a four to six-house area and ask those residents if one of them would be willing to have a streetlight in front of their home.
Matt, I know that there's different brightness on the streetlights, and the one that I have at the end of my block on Iroquois, which illuminates the Dead End, is not very bright, and yet it does a good job. And I know when I first moved in, it was a lot brighter. Can we give them that option if they don't want it, especially at the, you know, Dead End? Can we give them a different type of wattage for their streetlights?
With the LED, streetlights are a little bit different than the old high-pressure sodians. High-pressure sodium is usually 100 to 50, 400 watt light bulbs. With the new LED, there's different configurations that meet somewhat the same candle wattage power, so we can give, we can look into different options with the proximity of, to where the house is, especially with the new LED lights, there's not as much of a spread. It's very focused on the road or straight down. The spread, the wide-angle spread isn't as great as old high-pressure sodium or mercury vapor bulbs.
But if we put it in and they say it's too bright, can we change it without too much cost?
I'd have to look into that.
Okay, all right. Peter Jacobs.
Couple of quick questions. I would agree that if we're going to do streetlights, two of them, but I kind of want the police chief's recommendation. I mean, this is a public safety issue. I just want to know if you agree with the two, or do you think one would be sufficient, or?
Personally, I'd love to have two down there. You know, especially for us at night, the more, like we encourage people to put on their porch lights, the more light that's on the street, and I know there's a, you know, some energy issues, but it makes us happier to have more lights on, so.
Thank you.
Alderman Woods. Yeah, Matt, again, we kind of discussed this, and the original idea was multiple lights, but there was some pushback by some of the people as to who was going to have that light in front of their house. The definite is the one at the end of the block. That's without question. I personally would like to see the second one, but you guys would then have to, like you said, talk to those homeowners and find that happy spot for that light to go. But, you know, that is kind of the background on it. Originally, they thought there would be two, maybe even three, but then found out they didn't need three, and then maybe two, but then nobody really wanted to host the light fixture in the center of the block.
Go ahead.
I mean, we can, we've got the list of the petitioners, we've got the list of the people, the survey results, so we can try to marry those two up and find a, and then, you know, pitch the idea to that, to those residents or that resident and say, if you want one, we're more than happy to give it to you, but it's not going to, it's going to be in your front yard, not someone else's.
Yeah, my full faith that you'll make it work. Alderman Winger.
Thank you. I'm in agreement with the two lights, and it is a safety issue, so we do need to do that. And secondly, when the LED retrofit went in, they have the capability of being pitched almost away from the home, so I don't believe you were here when they all went in. The demonstration allows that, so when you're talking to that host of the second light, I'm wondering if you can demonstrate it for them on another street to show them that the lighting can be pitched away from homes. Thank you.
Alderman Jacob.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the two streetlights, as long as the neighbors agree to have it in front of the homes.
Second.
Couple more questions before we take a vote. Alderman Wesley.
I have a question. On the memo here, it says these expenditures can come up, absorb into the current year CIP. Are we talking current year of this year? So, we got the CIP that we're looking at right now. So, here's the thing, CIP that we're looking at right now, if I'm mistaken, has 22, $25,000 in it, right?
I believe it's 25,000, yes, sir.
Okay, so, we got roughly 19,000 planned for all the streetlights that we are looking at to put in place. Am I correct?
Yeah, approximately.
So, if there's another one that comes forward, we will not be able to accommodate another one down the line?
Go ahead.
And like I said, with these numbers, by going out to, going out to bid, or going out with a, with a group package deal on this, I have a full faith that these numbers will come in, these numbers are high, a little bit high, so we should be okay. So, if we have to do one or two more, we should be able to absorb that into the budget as well.
Mayor?
Matt, I'm going to go along with Alderman Wesley there. When you say current CIP, it's the one we're in right now, not the one we're approving this evening, correct?
No, to be done before April 30th.
Okay, so, I know there was, wasn't there two lights going in in Itasca Street or something? Do we have enough, and we still have enough money?
Gotcha.
Two lights already going in?
Yeah, because those, we got a cost for those lights. I think those were like six or seven, if I'm remembering correctly, so.
But, not, not 5,000, that's why I'm thinking, okay, we already got two, and now you got three more, 19. I've been doing the math, we're going over to 25,000.
And really, the cost of this is all about where is the power supply?
Right, right.
Directional boring and all those kinds of things.
Okay, I'm going to take one more question, and then we'll take a vote. Go ahead, Alderman Wesley.
I'm doing a follow-up with Mr., the mayor here. You guys just said it's going in 2015 CIP that we, I thought we just had it. So, my question is, what is actually the price tag for the two streets on Itasca? And didn't we do another streetlight besides those two on Itasca in this CIP?
Gotcha.
Didn't we do one in Elizabeth or something?
I believe this year, the first one was Itasca Street, Brad, right? Yeah, so, first one was Itasca, then we have these two, so, I mean, we have enough for all three locations. And actually, in previous years, I don't, we had a year where we had none.
So, what was earmarked, so what was earmarked in?
It's 25 grand every year and has been. Last year, we had none. This year, we have enough for all three.
Okay, so, the, I just want to make sure I'm right here. So, I want to make sure we got enough funding there. Right now, we are looking at $19,000 for, we're going to say these numbers are true.
Estimated cost for four.
All right, for 19 grand. What was Itasca streetlights?
Yeah, but as Matt just said, that's a very high-end estimation.
Any point I'm asking. I'm questioning what was Itasca?
Around six ballpark.
Six?
Six ballpark.
Each light?
Not each, total.
Total.
Go ahead, mayor.
If the numbers come in higher for some reason, it's 25,000 in this year's budget, they'll finish it off on May 5th, and go right into next year's budget anyway, so we'll be cut.
Okay, one more question.
One more question.
Right.
Keep in mind, if we don't install these or earmark it, according to what I understand, after the fiscal year, the budget goes back to zero. There ain't no money available to just carry money over. The counts go back to zero. Am I correct?
Go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, but you're, you've been budgeting 25 grand a year. Yeah, but you're, you've been budgeting twenty-five grand a year for the lights every year, so.
Okay, we have, who, who motioned?
Peter and Art.
And then Art, okay. Should we do a roll call? Okay, let's do a roll call.
Alderman Lazara.
Yes.
Alderman Jacobs.
Yes.
Alderman Winger.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
That passes. Report and recommendation for school street light installation. I'm turning it over to Matt again.
All right, so for school street, it's a similar situation. We have, at the end of school street, down by the reservoir, we have an area that was brought to my attention by the police department and the police chief, again, that there was that the police department would like some streetlights. And as you notice on our GIS computer mapping here, we have a streetlight very close to the, the, oops, excuse me. We have a streetlight that's very close to the parking area, but not in a, not in a location that illuminates this parking area to the extent that we feel that it should be lit. So, the proposal is to put a new streetlight on the north side of the street, near this parking, parking lot here by the, by the Itasca reservoir, Wooddale Itasca reservoir. And then also, one here in the cul-de-sac turnaround. There's actually is a comm ed pole approximately right here that we may be able to attach to, to save us some money, and just put a new streetlight on there. If not, we should have, the, the proposal is for to put two entirely new lights in here. So, the proposal is to put a streetlight on the north side of the street to help illuminate this parking structure, or parking lot area, and then one in the cul-de-sac, so people understand that there's a cul-de-sac there.
Matt, did this, did this one need a petition on this, or?
No, this was brought forward by the police department.
Okay, and we don't need to petition them, correct?
There's, yeah, there's no residents in this area.
No, okay. I'll start with commission, I mean, Alderman Winger.
I think this is a great place to put a light, and definitely needed, so I, I do support it. And just for added color, this is GIS and the capabilities of what we can do with this tool, correct? So, this is our own demonstration. It, it, it's a powerful thing to look at. Thank you.
Hey, Mike.
Matt, is there a way you can, or if the chief doesn't mind, this was brought by you, right?
That's correct. Actually, one of the patrol officers, based on their experiences, brought it forward, and that's why we brought it forward here.
Matt, is there a way you could look into, I mean, obviously, money is money, it's gonna cost five thousand per light. But is there a way, if they already have that pole, to use one of those square, square lights aiming out towards that way, to light up the whole area? I don't know if you know what I'm talking about, they use in my buildings that broadcast out in the parking lots.
Yeah, I mean, there's probably some different options that we can look at down in that area. Like to probably talk to our current supplier and see what other options we have down there. Since it's not, I mean, it is gonna be a streetlight, but there's, it's in kind of a different setting than a normal streetlight coverhead would be. We can probably do a couple of different things. So, we'll look at it, we'll look at some different options while we're, we're specing this out.
Wright.
Chief.
Yes, sir.
How is it with the cameras there? Do you have a hard time with the cameras at night, since there's no lights there?
Certainly, yeah. The, the cameras do okay at night, but they're not the best. Having more light in that area, because we do, the nice thing is, that area is used a lot now. With it comes an attractive nuisance, and if we can have a little bit more lighting, that'll also help with the, any camera that we're trying to observe from a distance what's going on, it would definitely help.
And on that note, can't we contact the county and ask them to share the cost on it?
We could certainly reach out to them. I know with the last camera project, I think at that point, they were, they were kind of done expending funds for that area. But, I mean, we can always ask.
Push it as safety.
Sure.
Alderman Eugene.
You know, I'm, I'm all for this, no doubt about it, but my concern is, where those lights are going to be, aren't they gonna be too close to each other? I mean, you look at the corner, then the cover.
It's approximately two-hundred and fifty feet from this streetlight to this corner, this cul-de-sac here. I actually went out there tonight. I think having a light here to illuminate these parking lights is, is a good idea. And it, actually, this corner is pretty dark still, even though there's, there is some lighting from the buildings back over in this area that kinda shined off, but it's, it's a dark corner, so.
Well, I, I'm fine. I just wanna make sure we aren't over-lighting that area, in that small area there, I mean.
Alderman Jacobs.
I'm in favor of this as well. Just one question. Does the city of Wooddale own all, I mean, what part of that street is city of Wooddale? Cause Roy had mentioned the county sharing in the cost.
Anyone know the answer?
The street is ours, and all the right-of-way around the street is ours. So, if the one light is over here, the comm ed light, if that's there, I mean, if we put it on their light, anything, anything basically south of this rock pile, it basically is.
Well, I guess what the, the question would be is that that parking lot is under our jurisdiction, correct?
That, that's my understanding, and, you know, the forest preserve, obviously, it's a, you know, the, the trail net is, is theirs. But I think the spots we're looking at would definitely be on city property. It could enhance their preserve a little bit, but.
Right, but I think the question is if something happens in that parking lot.
It's ours.
It's ours.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
I just wanna make a statement. This project was put together with the county to forest preserve, to build this reservoir. So, that's why I brought it to the attention of the county, to see if they would pick up some of the cost.
Okay.
So, the, the street and the parking is ours, though, but anything from the sidewalk over is the forest preserves and the county.
Alderman Jacobs.
With what Roy said, Alderman, if we could ask the forest preserve possibly, if we're gonna ask the county, see if the forest preserve would chip in as well?
Yeah, I think they said they were gonna reach out, right?
We can reach out. I, I just don't wanna unduly hold it up if they, you know, so he, cause I think part of this is him being able to bid on all three light, or all four lights at once. If we could get direction whether to proceed with all the bids, and then see if we can get them to chip in for part of this project.
Well, I'd like to make the motion to approve the school street light installation. Do I have a second?
Second.
Couple of more questions. Go ahead, Eugene.
The only thing that I would ask the motioner, add into the motion is to move forward the project, but in the meantime, still do reach out. If you can, add in the motion, don't stop the project, but at least make a phone call.
Would you need that in our motion? All right, well, then I'll amend that. Is that okay with the second? Okay. Art.
Yeah, my comment or question is gonna be along Alderman Sizmarski's. There's a porta potty out there also, isn't there? So, is that light gonna illuminate that? Like you said, this is more active, this area, with people riding their bikes and jogging. I myself ride my bike, and I don't wanna be scared when it gets dark out, so. Maybe we could look at some alternate light poles or sources that, maybe the one by the parking is a dual hat shining towards where the ported John's or porta potties are.
Porta potty is right here, at this.
Correct.
Right where my arrow's at, which is directly right, almost directly right across from this light pole here, so.
Does that, does that illuminate it? Cause that light pole looks like it's like buried in the treetops.
Yeah, I mean, this, this light pole, I mean, basically illuminates this roadway here. I don't know if it would go, I mean, it's not direct light all the way over here, but there's.
I, I'm just saying, if we're spending the money and we're looking at public safety, let's look at the whole picture. So, even if it's a matter, we need to trim the tree so the light gets out there, I'm okay with that. But, you know, if we're doing this, let's do it correctly. That's all I'm saying.
The one thing with the porta potty, I specifically remember, we didn't install that, that was theirs, so I don't know. We'd probably have to get explicit permission from them to do anything with a light by their porta potty, cause they installed it, I thought.
I, I'm saying that whatever, like, if you put another light by the.
Oh, you're talking the double light, not, not.
Right, I don't wanna add one to that facility, but at least some more light over there. I mean, it's.
All right, can I get a roll call, please?
Alderman Lazara.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Winger.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
And that passes. Items to be considered at future meetings, intersection, safety improvement, phase three, construction, supervision, contract, TBD. Anything else anyone like to add on this? Alderman Wesley.
I don't wanna add anything, but I'd like to make, make a comment tonight. To the residents out there, we are going to get hit with a little more snow this weekend. I would dearly recommend that we check on our neighbors if they need help. And I would also ask is that if there's a fire hydrant in front of your house, please dig it out for the fire department, could use it if there is a fire in your neighborhood. We are looking at, you know, several inches of snow in the next couple of days, and also Monday and Tuesday. So, I would ask that the residents in the neighborhood help out the other neighbors that need it.
And I think on that note, maybe, Matt, you want, if you wanna give us an update on our salt situation. I know we have some residents that are complaining about the fact that we're not salting enough.
The salt situation is very similar to that we talked about last week. We did do some salting yesterday to help clear the snowpack with the warming of temperatures yesterday. We had some, some pretty good success with that. The temperatures today didn't come to, to what we would hope, and the sunshine that went away this morning didn't, didn't give us too much help. We were out yesterday, like I said, and we were out this evening, working on some areas, some slick spot areas. So, coming into this next upcoming snowfall, we are going to be back in conservation mode again. So, we will be a limited amount of salt on the roadways. So, if you're driving on snowpack roads, there may be some icy spots, you know, slow down, be careful. And also, watch out for those, the public works guys that are out plowing. Will be out for the duration of the snow event, however long it takes us to get it, all the roads opened up again and cleared. So, if you see those yellow lights, make sure you slow down and give them plenty of room.
Yeah, thank you, Matt. Go ahead, Roy.
Matt, they've been mentioning on the news about the salt being stuck down the river, and that Chicago is gonna be paying three times as much for salt. Have you, do we, I know we ordered a hundred tons, and we have a price already for that. That price would not be locked in, of course. I'm sure if they, they can't get the salt through, our prices are gonna double here, too. Well, we, the price was for a hundred tons. It's not saying that they can't raise the price. Do we know what our next price is gonna be?
Well, we were, we, we were locked into four hundred tons at that price. We could only order a hundred tons at a time.
Okay, so they can't.
We were locked to four hundred tons. Now, what's it gonna be after that? I don't know. I got an email today that it was two fifteen from a guy in Pennsylvania that would bring it to me tomorrow. Or try to start bringing it to me tomorrow for two hundred and fifteen dollars a ton. We're not in, we're not in that position. We have been doing, we have been doing a very good job, I believe, in the public works department, of conserving the salt so we don't have to, to pay that two hundred and fifteen dollars a ton price. So, that's why the roads might look a little bit different than they have in years past. But we are trying to be physically responsible and make sure that we have some for when we have the, the tough times that may come ahead of us.
Okay.
Anything else? Thank you, Matt. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. I'll oppose. I mean, I'll. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll oppose. Thank you. Read the adjourn.
Call to order Finance and Administration Committee. The minute take, take the roll call from the previous two committees. Need approval of minutes for me, of the meeting for January twenty-three, night two, uh, twenty-fourteen.
I make the motion.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries. Have a report and recommendation for the CIP. I'm gonna refer to Brad first.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. At our last week's meeting, we did make it through the entire booklet. However, there were six items that the committee wanted staff to go back and, and look at again, get some pricing, and come back to you this week. I believe there was a sheet of paper that was placed on, on the dais tonight before the meeting. So, real quick, we'll try to go through these six items. If there's any questions, obviously, we'll take those as we go through them. So, that being said, first one was the police department furniture that was brought back last week. The chief, through Mr. York's vendor for the treatment plant furniture, came back with a price, just shy of seventeen thousand dollars for the furniture in the police department. The admin furniture, we call the admin furniture, it's mostly the stuff in the exec session. All the stuff in exec session, was ballpark around twelve thousand. The sidewalk on Hemlock, which is around Central Park, to finish off that square, to go all the way down and do some other stuff was approximately a hundred thousand. The sidewalk that was previously in the unfunded section, but it's gotten dropped off, bringing it back into the unfunded section on Edgewood was two hundred and eighty thousand.
We're stopping for a second. The Edgewood, from where, which one was that? Is it the one that's been sitting in limbo for?
Correct.
Ten years already?
It was three or four years, and it applied for a grant a couple of times, and it kept getting.
Went to, it went out for bid a long time, and not bid, but went out on a petition before I was Alderman, so.
Correct. Yeah, that's, that's the one. Moving on to the next item, the GPS tracking of the public works vehicles. The upfront cost also includes the first year of the recurring cost. It's estimated around twenty thousand. Some of the newer vehicles already kinda have it built-ins, we just have to turn it on. And some of the vehicles that we're, would be replacing in a year or two, probably wouldn't specifically do, since, you know, paid to retrofit a vehicle to get rid of it a year later. But the upfront costs to retrofit all the existing vehicles would be, plus the first year would be twenty thousand, and then be approximately ten thousand per year after that to keep the program up. And for a couple of different various reasons, that will be programmed into fiscal sixteen, so not May first of this year, but May first of the following year.
Alderman Woods.
Brad, where are the, where are the costs at in that project? You made the statement, some of the cars are equipped with it. I mean, where's the bulk of the cost coming from? Is it a hardware issue, a software issue, a subscription issue?
Subscription.
So, the, the ten thousand is, is the, the big thing, and that's a reoccurring?
Correct. And the ten thousand's embedded in that twenty.
Right.
It, it was give or take another eight thousand, depending on how many of the vehicles we did. If we did all of them, it could be up around nine thousand. If the vehicles were replaced within two years, we decided not to do, we could bring that back down. But the lion's share of that, that cost would be the, the monthly, which would become an annual subscription cost.
And how does that work? I mean, I'm assuming that we have some mapping system with nine-one-one to look at stuff. Does that, another, a separate layer, or is that interactive? Chief, if you're gonna shed some.
Yeah, the, the current system we have, it's tied in with our Verizon wireless cards, that we get all of our data on the computers and our lead stuff and all of our dispatch stuff. County pays for, it's, it's the ATM system, they pay for the, the nine-one-one board pays for the CAD system that also has the mapping feature. So, this wouldn't integrate with that one, because that one's specifically tied to county, unless there's a way to do that. But that's how our system works. Maybe Matt has a little more on the one they looked at.
The one I looked at briefly was. The one I looked at briefly, um, was, um, a company called GPS track it dot com. What it does is it's, uh, it's a wireless, it's a Verizon wireless card as well, um, and it basically syncs everything up to a, a cloud-based system that you can log into and there's a multiple data functions that are, are relayed back to that on a, on a, on a real-time basis. So, uh, basically it's a website to log into and, um, the information is, is stored there, so it's no, it's no onsite, um, IT requirements from, from NIC or, you know, holding things on our servers, everything is, is cloud-based. And it would show routing, um, speeds, um, you know, I mean, basically, basically anything like a, a trucking company, a truck company would use theirs for.
Right, so then you would have this, the, the, the police chief or dispatcher, whoever would have another monitor up watching that also. So, part of my question is, we have systems in place, some of these systems, one would think overlap, obviously, you know, everybody's protecting their, their licensing and, and, uh, stuff, so that's becoming an issue. I'm just concerned that we don't have too many things overlapping and become unusable.
And I think with, uh, with this process, um, it's kind of separate from the police department, uh, public work, we looked at more, basically, I mean, looked at it as a public works function. If you wanna use building function, if you wanna tie it into the building department, um, that's fine as well, we can, we can assist them with that. But, um, it wouldn't be kind of on the level of what the police department use it for, but, um, if we, if we used it for, on our snowplow trucks and we had, um, a resident on Sunnyside that said, no plow truck has gone down that street today. I could log into it, find out what truck went down that street, what time it went down that street and notify the resident that that happened at that point in time. So it's basically two separate systems from what the police department utilize.
Okay, so then question to Brad, if you, what, the twenty thousand and the ten thousand reoccurring, is that outfit just the police department or public works, how many vehicles?
Sure, it's just, uh, the public works vehicles, cause the, the police already, they're already equipped.
Okay, so that was-
And a point of clarification, the, the ten thousand wouldn't be required in fiscal sixteen, cause it's built into that twenty, so that would be beginning in fiscal seventeen.
And how many vehicles then would we, we have this on?
I was looking at thirty-five vehicles to start, thirty-five public works here.
Thirty-five vehicles, okay, thank you.
One, one question to annual, uh, fee, what, does the police department have an annual fee too?
I mean, it's the same company, right, Verizon?
No, our Verizon costs, that covers, it's probably a different type of, cause we get all of our data over that, so we get leads data, we get our dispatch data, um, all of our ticketing data. All that comes through our Verizon card, which is a fixed government cost, it's forty dollars a car per month. The ETSB board is part of our Motorola nine-one-one computer aided dispatch. That's paid for by them, the software that monitors the GPS locations. And it's, it ties not only their location on the map, but you can click on them and see what call number they're on, what, i- i- it's definitely tied into the CAD system.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Woods?
What, uh, this question, thanks for stepping up, Matt. As far as the ten thousand dollars a year, um, are we gonna get ten thousand dollars worth of value out of this product, in your opinion?
I haven't, uh, fully, uh, been able to process what we're gonna be able to get out of this project. If Mr. Murmas would like to, uh, input, he'd be more, I'd be more than happy to take his information.
City Manager Murmas?
That's, uh, one of the reasons we've got it in fiscal year sixteen, because it's really a rush job and we haven't had adequate time to, you know, discuss the pros and cons of the system. So as we're not committed to anything past fifteen, that's why it's in sixteen, that's one of the major reasons, give us some time. Come next year, when we talk about this, we may say, hey, look, we looked at this, ten grand a year, maybe it's not worth the ten grand.
Done? Done, done? Go ahead.
Yeah, and just the, one thing to kind of follow up on that, and, you know, is that, you know, Matt, uh, Mr. York said thirty-five vehicles. If we find that there's really, you know, only a priority to track the snow plowing, then we could just put it on the six trucks that plow the streets. I mean, this is very scalable, we could do one to thirty-five. So part of the analysis process would be, do we need to do every vehicle or are there complaints in these certain areas, then we could scale it and tailor it to that, if we wanted to.
Alderman Woods?
Yeah, I mean, that's just kinda what I'm trying to figure out, I think that there's some benefit and value in having it. I didn't know if we looked into it and could quantify, uh, and, and, and talk to that at all today, I mean, I didn't realize we were gonna put it on thirty-five vehicles, although that now kinda makes the number look a little better than it did before when I didn't know how many vehicles we were doing. But yeah, I mean, I, for the future, I think it's something we need to look into, I think that, that there is some benefit and maybe we do start at a smaller scale, I don't know, you know, if you guys could address those questions.
Please. Wesley?
The reason why we looked at this too is because we've had some problems with some employees going out, out of the area. And we also had people going out shopping on city time. So, it's not right for these people to go out of the area when the trucks aren't allowed to go out there or go shopping on city time. We need something to say, I, I'm not saying we have to be big boys and stuff, but, I mean, it doesn't happen. So at least we have to know where these, these vehicles are, and if there's an accident or something, it would help with that too.
Mr. Murmas?
Yeah, I agree with, uh, Alderman Wesley, um, we'll put that in the pro column of the program, but I don't think we're prepared to discuss the full validity of the program tonight, so we'll put that in the pro column for when we bring it up.
Right.
Okay, thank you, um, and the last one, uh, that, uh, staff was asked to go back and look at was the, the INI program for the city. Uh, so what these two numbers represent are a couple of different things, first of all, uh, public only. Second of all, this, these were classified as the high, um, high problem areas. Uh, the number in fiscal fifteen, the two hundred and seventy thousand for construction, is the program that's effectively already been designed and needing to be constructed. Uh, the fiscal sixteen number is the program is what the, the section that they're currently working on, that they would design the repairs for the public infrastructure and the costs associated with public infrastructure. Nowhere in these costs are the next phase of the program, um, and this is only the public component of it, so there's no private component. Uh, so last week, there were some issues with the access, things of that nature, so this is only public infrastructure and nowhere in here is there a contract to move on to area four, which will be the next area. This is to clean up completely areas one, two, and three. And then in fiscal seventeen, you know, next year during the CIP process, we'll have a, uh, you know, clearer picture of where one, two, and three are getting cleaned up, done, and then get direction from the council as to how you wanna move forward with areas four and forward at that time. But this cleans up the public, high, you know, high, uh, high problem areas, um, and only the public areas in two and three, with one being done this fiscal year, so.
Alderman Wesley?
So, what we're saying that this INI, and I wanna make sure I write, this is to finish up what the contract is right now, we are not going to another phase on this project at, at this time. Cause that was a long discussion here, that we got all this still outstanding at the last meeting. So this is not to move forward, it's where, they have to finish those two sections up that they are doing now, am I correct?
Correct.
Cause I think that was the, the mayor's biggest concern is that, and I think the whole council was concerned that we're putting all this money out, but we aren't getting anything, they're even finishing, they're jumping all over the place. So I just wanna make sure that this is for, that's been ongoing now to wrap that whole project up. Is that what I'm hearing tonight?
Correct, yeah, the, these costs would finish up what they've already, the areas that they've already began working on, there'd be no, uh, scope creep or anything like that, this would, uh, square up those three areas.
Well, since they hid their contract, they would not come to us with where that status of that program is. I mean, I don't know, when the last time they came here, RJN, to give us update on that project.
You want the mayor first, I mean, what do you mean?
Did the manager wanna make a-
I was just gonna, I was just gonna say that, I mean, they have come out in the past, um, to give updates, I mean, it's been a while, so we can get them in for another update, but, I mean, I know they've come in at least twice.
Mayor?
Brad, two hundred and seventy thousand for fiscal year fifteen, is that two seventy that's left over that we have to transfer from two thousand fourteen, that, from that, what was it, five hundred thousand that we didn't use? Is, is that what you're telling me here?
Yeah, I mean, just going back a little bit, it's been five hundred thousand for each of the last three years. And we haven't spent, yeah, and we lowered it going into this, uh, this process.
For fifteen, seventy-five.
Yeah, to four, to four twenty-five.
Right.
Um, and now stripping out any of the going forward and the, the private, uh, components, it's down to two seventy. Uh, we've gone back and looked and we haven't spent the one and a half million dollars over the last three years, that hasn't all been expended. So, I mean, yes, this two seventy will be rebudgeted, but all that money from the past years has not been spent, has not been spent since they haven't completed the areas, it wouldn't really be possible for them to spend all the money.
Right, so a million and a half the first three years, we haven't spent it all, but like Alderman Wesley stated earlier, funds go back down to zero and we reallocate. So, again, I think I asked last week, how much should we spend? Has the engineer completely paid off for the first three sections? I think that should be on agenda, I should've brought it up, I figured I was gonna get some answers here under public works coming up, will we get some of these answers? How many residents they didn't get into, how many residents they got a hold of and were fixed? You know, we're just carrying the numbers over, but I don't recall exactly what.
Mr. Wesley?
Yeah, um, they've had three different, uh, contracts so far through this. Um, and each one has a, had a defined scope, like, you know, one was the, um, the flow monitoring was the first one in, uh, two thousand eleven, fiscal twelve. That one had been paid off, so they did all the flow monitoring. The first one in two thousand twelve fiscal thirteen was the smoke testing and some of the other stuff, that one has, has been done and paid off. The one that was just passed in August of last year, uh, that one has not, there's still money remaining on that contract. Which indicates there's still work to be done on that contract, which, which we all know, since they're not done with those areas. So the first two, that they did, they completed the, the scope of work for those two contracts and the contract they're in now, they have not completed the full scope work for that contract, and so they're still working towards that goal. Some of the other stuff, um, I believe, uh, Mr. York got some other information on, um, some of the other questions you had, so.
Yeah, can I go first real quick?
So basically for this budget, for fiscal year fifteen, we wanna put two hundred and seventy thousand strictly for construction. And I believe, I don't apologize, I don't have the number in front of me, with seventy-five thousand, eighty thousand for engineering, so basically, they're done, the engineers have done their phase and that, and they're completely paid for this phase, whatever, three. Cause it would've been four if we would've went to another contract this coming year, correct? So, again, we're the, I just wanna make sure that we're not putting next year's, like I say, the four hundred and twenty-five, five thousand. Well, the engineers got their seventy thousand from the first contract, but you know what, it's a little more work than they entail. And they're gonna collect over here on this contract and really they didn't finish over here. I just wanna see the numbers.
Yeah, I can, uh, kinda speak to what's been completed so far, um, as, as these projects are done and as segments of these projects are done, we're billed by RJN or, um, um, institu form or the company that does the manhole repairs and stuff. So as those come in, they're paid for as they go about doing it. In area one, ninety-eight percent of the private stuff has been completed, two percent is left, two percent, and that's going towards enforcement. So that's if, if, uh, the city council wants us to go forward and do enforcement action with the community development department, um, that's, that's what's left to do in area one. In area two, uh, seventy percent has been completed, they're still doing inspection, home inspections, they're still doing dye testing. So, um, what happens is they come through an area, they think that, um, you know, Suzie's house has got a, uh, sump pump connected, they've gotta get inside the house. If they can't get inside the house, then they move on to the next one, if they can't get inside the house, then they do, um, a dye test, um, to see what happens where, when it comes out of the sump pump. If the sump pump comes out onto land, they say, okay, we apologize, you know, we, you, you're doing it the right way, we move on, they cross that one off as it completed. So seventy percent of those in area two. Area three, they've done their initial inspection, they haven't done any dye testing, and fifty-eight percent have already been knocked off the list. So when they came through area three and, area three and they did the smoke testing and everything, they had a laundry list of houses, fifty-eight percent of those have already been crossed off and are moving forward in the next project. So, um, what we're trying to do now is get through area two and area three, construction, get them done, get them out of the way. Haven't, no, nobody's starting in area four yet. We believe that the two hundred and seventy thousand, um, includes the cost of construction, includes the cost of design, it includes the, the cost of RJN doing whatever they need to do to get that high priority level to stuff done. For area two and area three, so that's what we're gonna try to do and that's what we're asking, um, and the CIP is for this year, two hundred and seventy thousand, next year, three hundred and fifty thousand to, and finish those two things up. Be able to provide a, a great set of reports to the council before we even decide what area four is gonna be. If we're gonna move forward with area four, if we're going to scale down the approach and only do private, only do public, whatever, so that's where we're at.
Alderman Woods?
Yeah, I just gotta, I don't, I don't wanna monopolize the time here, but, Matt, you just said the two hundred and seventy, finish up fifteen, three hundred and fifty, then finish up before we go to area four. So, you just told me it's six hundred and twenty thousand to finish up area three or one, two, and three, is that what you're telling me?
That's what they're saying, it's construction cost to finish up area two and area three. So that's not above and beyond the hundred, or one point five million that's included in that one point five million.
And again, that's where I wanna, I like to see those numbers. You know, okay, a million five, but, so you're telling me from the first three phases, we're not gonna finish until fiscal year two thousand sixteen? And we head into budget to approve another contract next fiscal year. I really like to see where we stand, the one point five million and what we spent, what wasn't spent. At least it's more clear, like this, I'm just looking at, now I'm looking at six hundred and twenty thousand to finish the first three sections, so that tells me we only spent about nine hundred thousand the first three phases, so. Now, if numbers should add up, I just wanna see it in black and white, that's all.
Yeah, I mean, that's kinda what we're doing now, we're not, I mean, what they were doing initially was, you know, let's say, start on an area, they weren't necessarily done with the area and then they'd start the next year's plan, so we've got kinda all the plans going right now. That's why we lessened it and then we decided, let's cut off future years, finish what we're going on now, then you guys can, we'll bring RJN in here, we'll give you the exact numbers, but it's essentially what we're doing.
I'm just saying the numbers should add up, so if we get a sheet, we'll, should be one point five million, cause I think they were all five hundred- Should be one point five million, cause I think they were all five hundred thousand pretty close.
The, but those numbers were just budgeted numbers, we weren't set to, or tied in to expend that. I recall, I mean, wasn't there a fee, like a hundred thousand a year to do the, the study part, the knocking on the doors, the smoke, the dye, all that? The other money was projected costs to do the repairs or improvements. That's the first question, is that correct?
Yeah, that's, that's a hundred percent correct, and that's why you remember before we even started discussions with the council asking questions, staff had already lowered the ballpark number, knowing that it was already too high, that we weren't spending that amount of money anyway. So you'll notice, I think it was what, fifty grand, seventy-five grand cheaper in the out years before you guys even said anything.
Right, so, and then my remembrance was that the, the first year or two, we didn't do any, uh, repair or constructive work, improvement work. It was just more study, I think, as you said, was, the flow study was the first year, so we did no work. And then the second year was just some smoke studies, we didn't do any work, it wasn't till the third year that we added or budgeted to actually do repairs or, or did some repairs, is that correct?
I mean, there, there was some, like, manhole work done in houses, some minor work in house or whatever, yeah, full-blown contracts with Instituform or something like that, yes, certainly.
And then, third, if, if I may, so then going back to some of the, the numbers that, uh, Mr. York gave us, that, uh, area one is, what was it, eighty percent?
N- ninety-eight.
Ninety-eight percent done, so the two percent, that means that we didn't get into two percent of the homes?
We haven't completed two percent of, yes, of the homes that were on the original list of ones that, that may or may not be, um, problematic. So two percent of the homes that are on that list, and I think the number is, is something very small, something around the maybe ten homes, that, um, they would like to move towards enforcement. Now, that's, that kind of a different, uh, animal that we're, that we're trying to deal with both internally and I know at, at the council level, is how do we go about doing enforcement? So as of right now, that two percent, I would like to just kinda hold off on that two percent until we can find...
All right, and that, and that's kinda, and I think I'm getting to where the mayor was going, so there's two percent there. And then the next area, area two was...
Yeah, there are seventy percent completed there.
So that's gonna be a bigger number that we're holding to the side, and then go to area three, that's even a...
Fifty-eight, yeah.
A still bigger number, and, and I think the question is, so then, if we went to area four, can they just go to like twenty percent of the homes and, and they're done? So at what point are they doing the job or not doing the job? I get that we get into the enforcement issue.
Fifty-eight, fifty, sorry, fifty-eight percent on the initial test. There, uh, what they explained to me was that that was an extremely high number that they got to and got corrected without doing much work on their part, part. So, but basically what we're looking at now is, okay, we've got ninety-eight percent, we got seventy percent, we got fifty-eight percent. But we've got, you know, like the mayor said, six hundred plus thousand dollars worth of public work that we can get done without any, without dealing with any other residential issues. We need to move forward with what we can do, um, to better our system immediately. And that, and that's why we're pushing for the, the suspension almost of the public or the private side of it and focusing just all our, all of our horses on, on the public side for the next two years. And then we can regroup and move forward with the, with the rest of the program.
And I, and I get that part that we're gonna do, uh, the public side of it. Cause my question goes to the contract, what's an acceptable execution of the contract? If in one area they do ninety-eight percent, next area is seven, next area is fifty-eight. I think that's the big question before us, are we getting our money's worth?
Yeah, it's just there, those are at different stages in the process.
So they're not, I, I guess, are they paid out? I mean, we could talk about this for hours, I would assume.
They're, they're paid out per hours of work on each of these portions of the project.
So each one of these contracts still has money left in them for them to execute?
Yes.
Some consulting work?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I have two questions. The area one, ninety-eight percent completed, is that counting the repairs and everything in that area?
Yes.
Fine, so, all right. My other question will probably be to whoever handles contracts. What was the term on this contract for this project to be completed? What was the date we signed the contract and what is the end date of that contract? Or is it a open end date whenever they finish?
I would believe that we were working towards completion of the individual section two, or one or three for that matter. I don't, I would imagine there wouldn't be an end date because of the nature of the beast, but I could be wrong.
So there was a...
I mean, they're gonna do the work regardless and they're not gonna get paid till they finish the work.
I told you.
And we don't want them to rush because we want them to do the job, so. I didn't look at the contract recently, but...
But I believe most contracts that we prove up here is there's a start date and there's an end date.
Yeah, but this is a different type of deal.
I don't know, I'd like to see that contract.
I would, I would agree that there probably isn't a time limit, but is there a, a scope of work? I mean, if, if I was on their side, I would go, how do I know I'm gonna get in every house, how many times do I go to Dallas before I can say I'm complete? So maybe if we could get a copy of that so we could figure out what that is. Thank you.
On a different topic on the sidewalk, and I, I kinda would like some comment from the two aldermen in Ward four. I, about the sidewalks for Hemlock, we have a hundred thousand. Is that the one with the park? And then the Edgewood, the two hundred and eighty thousand unfunded? Since that's been unfunded for such a long time, would, wouldn't it be who the residents in your ward to start doing that before we do Hemlock? And put the hundred thousand to Edgewood and start doing work on Edgewood before we do something that's, hasn't been talked about? That's just kinda recent?
I know historically, Alderman Jacob, before you were on the council, when this got brought up, it was kinda the council's direction. This is important, but this actually has the availability or the possibility of getting some grant funding. So we've been applying for those grants. And I think the idea was to try to get the grant funding, um, and not do it all on our own. But if council wants to switch, then we'll plug it in.
I think the whole concern about that, and, and, and I appreciate your comments tonight on that. I felt the Hemlock issue is a, uh, it is the busiest park in the Park District. And if you go over to the area, there's a lot of kids there. I'm looking at more safety for that area for the kids than Edgewood. Believe me, I, I would love to, to Edgewood, no doubt about, like Mike said, it's been out there for, before he became alderman. We keep applying for the grant, but I'd rather get the Hemlock one done, completed, and then look at next CIP, possibly doing Edgewood, or had that petition come back up on, on the dais. But my concern right now would, that may kids over there in Hemlock, I, I would consider safety over there than right now. I mean, Mike could care chime into that. Well...
Yeah, we, uh, had some initial talks with the Park District, they seem open to at least some sort of, uh, participation in the sidewalk. Um, but haven't worked out all the details yet, but they're, they're game for, for talking about it, yeah.
Actually, I was at the Park District meeting this past week. It was good timing, a letter from Jeremy came, and I think the share of the Park District sidewalk right in front of the park was like thirty thousand. There was a cost share to that. They did seem fairly open to that. But on the other Edgewood, on the Edgewood sidewalk, the other thing was, I think we did another sidewalk in Ward four, I don't remember what street it was, but that was during a full reconstruction, or we did it separate, I can't remember, that was about five years ago. And then this other group came and at the council then decided, well, if we're gonna have everybody come up at sidewalks, usually we put them in when we do full reconstructions. And I think at that time we had spent a hundred and fifty thousand on a, was it Oak Street?
It was Oak, I think.
Oak. And that's why everybody kinda put the rigs on, well, let's see if we can get some grant money, because if we're gonna start putting sidewalks on every street at a quarter million dollars, we're not gonna be able to resurface anymore. And that's why we went for the grant money, if I remember right.
Well, the only problem, I mean, that I have is constant residents asking, you know, we've signed a petition, we said yes, and the majority of them all said yes, and they didn't get one on either side yet, so.
Right.
They see other one, other sidewalks going, they're all around town, they get skipped over, so.
That was, right, about five years now, I think.
Um, on the Hemlock, the hundred thousand dollars, would, did that include the Park District helping out or cost sharing in that, or no?
That number did not. Uh, that would be the, kinda the full exposure to the city. And then, uh, you know, if the Park District did agree to some number, then obviously that would come down. But we wanted to show the full exposure, um, you know, cause until we get something in writing from the Park District, we can't, I mean, we can, you know, speculate, but until we actually get something, um, you know, we do the same thing with the Yoson or Hair numbers. So we put in, we expect to get some money from the tollway, but until we actually know what those numbers are and get it in writing, we can't specifically count on that money.
You know, I'd like to put the Hemlock in there now. And try to push the Park District to get, say yes, no, whatever. For twenty sixteen.
Yeah, and that's part of the reason why we put it in sixteen was to, cause the Park District had a number of questions concerning the design, location. Their parking lot and other parts, so to give it a year to answer all their questions and get an IGA in place. So it wouldn't be this summer, it would be next summer.
I would still even like to, when is their, I don't know what their fiscal year is or whatever, if they're doing their budget now or what. But I would even try to push it further and try to get it in for twenty fifteen if you can.
As soon as ours are...
Sooner the better.
It's around this time, so they're close to the same thing, so.
Well, maybe, maybe we could ask them now and push it further.
Going back to what Alderman Suzmarski said, if, let's say the sidewalk only comes to sixty thousand and the Park District does half, and that, you know, that leaves us extra money, couldn't we get started at least on Edgewood somewhere? Uh, you know, these people, like Alderman Suzmarski said, were asked, you know, they, they were asked about the sidewalk a long time ago. They're asking both aldermen, you know, what's going on with all these sidewalks? If there's extra money there, if we have a hundred thousand, if we could save a little, if we could at least get started somewhere on Edgewood.
I agree with him, is, is there a way, whatever the sidewalk comes to, could we earmark money to at least engineer, do the design on Edgewood if it comes in lower? I mean, can you tell me that? Could we look at engineering it, and therefore when the money comes available, we could just go right to construction?
So I was gonna say, I mean, if you wanna direct staff to design the Edgewood sidewalks, then you tell us to...
Well, will that go under the CIP?
It would.
Well, then, I will make a recommendation that we go ahead and find money to do the engineer and take away the carport that the police department went. So that will help us pay for the engineer design for the... But I recommend that, I think we should earmark some money to start the design phase.
So, so to wrap it up, um, maybe we just, uh, put the Hemlock in fifteen and then try our best to work with the Park District to, to get it going this year. And also for sure, just plug in some monies to cover for the engineering of Edgewood.
So are we looking to, so you're, you're looking at add money to the, I'm sorry. We're looking to add money into the CIP to start the engineering on Edgewood? And what dollar amount were you looking at?
Yeah, I mean, the, typically, um, both sides of the ledger, the design and, uh, engineering, I think we, we targeted about fifteen percent. And so it's seven to eight percent on each, so I mean, the high would be twenty-eight thousand, probably twenty-two would be closer. But we can put in twenty-eight and then, then see where it comes in. Correct.
Okay, so I, I would ask that that be put in the CIP for designing the Edgewood sidewalk. So that, that would be a motion, a motion on it or direction?
Direction, to put in fifteen.
Direction and consensus is fine.
What year, are we moving it up a year, or is it staying sixteen?
I, I think what I'm trying to do is, what I'm trying to do is get, this year I'd like to, well, if we do the Hemlock twenty sixteen, I'm looking at spending twenty-eight thousand dollars in sixteen for the design, uh, engineer study on it. Or if we could do it in twenty fifteen, but I don't think we would be able to move that. I would like to do it in twenty fifteen if we could, but...
Yeah.
Twenty fifteen for design.
Yeah, I was under the impression the design would be in fifteen and that Hemlock would get moved up to the fifteen and then we would work with the Park District to, to get that in place as well. So both of the sidewalk items would be fifteen, the actual construction of Edgewood would be in an out year, but the design would be, be this year.
Right, that's what I was hearing, I just wanted some clarification, everybody else was hearing the same thing.
Okay.
So there's nobody mentioned any years.
So I would ask that the... I, yeah, I would ask the staff, uh, get the direction from the council here to sp- uh, to put aside twenty-eight thousand dollars in engineering for the sidewalk on Edgewood. So that would be my recommendation.
I, I would definitely be in favor of that as well. Um, just, uh, maybe the mayor or Jeff or someone can answer this, the two hundred and eighty thousand dollars, was that just a plugged-in figure? Was that, somebody gave us an estimate, or where did we, that number come up from?
I think that was based off the Oak Street, uh, basically, the square footage and everything. So I took the square footage, I think this goes from Irving to Stonem, is that correct on that sidewalk? I don't know if anybody remembers. It was a, I mean, it was five, at least five years ago. And that's how they got the number, they received the number. That's the only thing I can tell you.
Yeah, it's gonna say, I mean, that, that's, that was the engineer's estimate at the time, but that included the design, the construction and the management, and there was some, I think, nominal amount for soil sampling in there to make sure it was gonna be on, on good soil. So that two eighty was everything, so once the design's done, that two eighty's gonna come down a little bit, cause that was embedded in that number already.
Is that cost engineering for both sides or one side? I don't remember what the, uh, position was a hundred percent for.
My recollection was both sides, just like, uh, it was on Oak, that was my recollection.
Okay, so I want, I wanna make sure I, I have this right here. We're gonna try to push Hemlock to twenty fifteen to get it done in fiscal year twenty fourteen, fifteen? Or fifteen, sixteen?
Fifteen, fifteen, fourteen, fifteen this summer.
Fourteen, fifteen, so we're gonna get done this summer.
That's the idea, correct.
Don't, I, even at a, I want the Park District to participate, participate in it. But if they, for some reason, they says, oh, we can't afford it or whatever, let's get it done. And we'll say, okay, fine, you put it in your next year's budget and just pay us back the following year. So let's just try to get this done one way or another, so. Do we, okay, so that's just a direction.
Unless anybody else had anything, this, uh, with the items that were, you know, uh, was asked of staff to come back with. So at this point, I have nothing further.
Need a motion? Do you need a motion?
I, I'll, I'll make a motion.
They, they got a direction.
Any motion or pass the X C P?
Oh, they passed the C I P.
I, I was, I would, um... I, I will make the motion, approve the CIP plan for two thousand fifteen, two thousand nineteen with adding the topics that we talked about tonight, and also that we get a copy of the I and I questions that was raised tonight. So, I will make the motion, we approved the CIP, two thousand fifteen, two thousand nineteen, as presented, with the changes that we discussed tonight. So, that will be my motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Of items we consider for future meetings, and I have one is TIF RFP results, February thirteenth. And fiscal year twenty fifteen budget, February twenty-seventh.
Thank you, and it's either an item at a future meeting or suggestion to go straight to council, next council meeting, that I had the benefit of attending a heroin awareness discussion yesterday at Fenton High School, and also one at the junior high that our chief of police has coordinated, coordinated and spearheaded and worked together with the coroner's office and two nonprofit groups to educate our citizens and our students on a really important topic. And this heroin epidemic is, it is very dangerous, as, as we've seen here at council as well, the video. And the statistics, statistics are, every eight days, there's someone in DuPage County that dies from an overdose. And there are two nonprofit groups that have put on this discussion. One is the LTM Heroin Awareness and Support Foundation, and the other is a foundation headed by Nick Gore, one of the people that spoke with us in the community. So, I'm gonna make a suggestion that we, the, the city provide a thousand dollars to the LTM Foundation and five hundred to, to Nick Gore in, in his nonprofit group. Whether we do this at council or the next committee meeting, I'm okay with that. I believe it can go straight to, to council mayor, would that be correct?
Actually, yes, the chief brought it up last night, and I'm not sure if he talked to the manager yet, if he knows about it already or not. It'll be on the agenda.
Yeah, at council?
Next week.
And, and then we'll, we'll achieve our, you, Mr. Wilson, find out what account that'll come out of, and, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I'm, I'm in favor of that, if the chief could just put together the proper foundation names and, and all that and present, and Wilson can, what account that's gonna come out of.
Yeah, the chief touched basically a little bit on that this morning. We'll put in a memo with all the information, so then there's, there's no confusion. So, you'll have it tomorrow.
I, I would like to, if we're gonna do a thousand and five hundred, just do a thousand for each, I mean, to make it equal to both.
We don't have to discuss the amounts tonight, you can decide next week. We'll put the information in there, and then you guys can think about it.
Anything further? Like a motion or a adjournment?
So, move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vote. Motion carries.